Welcome to the USA. I'm proud to be an American. I'm proud to be an American. All the way to America. Come with us discovering America. Come with us to let the music ring. All the young love country songs. Hear the people's song. Coming in the USA. Come with us discovering America. Come with us today. We'll celebrate the character that makes America great. Coming in the USA. Since our long history, so many years ago. America has died, it changes when our wings is blown. Listen to the music, tears last year in Star Wars. There's nothing more American than song. Straight from the heart. Come with us discovering America. A mighty land that's come on one more way. Hear the people's song and hold them up for freedom's sake. Coming in the USA. In the USA. The USA. Welcome today to the USA. We are proud of our country all that it can. Tonight, we'll be celebrating our country's music. From a country where they're done, to a whole time rock and roll. And to a raw and show service that are all deeply preserved. Our journey begins way down south. Yes. Won't you come along with me? To the Mississippi. We'll take a walk to the land of dreams. Straight down the river down to New Orleans. Basin trees is the streets. Where the hippies always meet in New Orleans. Land of dreams. You'll never know what life seems to just so much it really means. Proud to be. Proud to be. Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry. But that's real. Welcome to the USA. Where I can live. My face as she blue. In New Orleans. They heard the breeze in the trees singing. With the marines and they made that. The silent blues. From a windmill. And a black circle of blue. They took the blue to the roads. Pushed it through hearts. Till it was more. Into a blue. Into a blue. And then they cursed it. Reversed it. And gave out the news. That the soul fire gave birth to the blues. There is a nice in order. With those beautiful queens. Way out yonder in New Orleans. Way out yonder in New Orleans. In the land of dreamy seas. There's a garden of Eden. That's what I need. Creel things with flashing eyes. Softly whispering tender star stuff. Won't you give your ladies there a little smile stuff? In that your life you'll linger there. A little while. There is a nice in order. With those beautiful queens. Way out yonder in New Orleans. Oh, when the saints. Oh, when the saints. So marching. So marching. Oh, when the saints so marching. So marching. Oh, when the saints so marching. Oh, when the saints so marching. When the saints so marching. When the saints so marching. Ready? I got rhythm. 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 Well, now will you clap that that? I got rhythm. I got music. I got my man who could ask for anything more. I got daisies in green ashes. I got my man who could ask for anything more. Oh, natural. I don't, I don't, I don't find him. You won't find him. Round and round and round my door. I got starlight. I got sea dreams. I got my man who could ask for anything more. Who could ask for anything more? Oh, I got rhythm. Yes, I got music. Oh, I got my man who could ask for anything more. Oh, natural. I don't, I don't, I don't find him. You won't find him. Round and round and round my door. I got starlight. I got sea dreams. I got my man who could ask for anything more. I got rhythm. 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 Well, now will you clap? I got rhythm. There's a somebody I'm longing to see. I hope that he turns out to be. Someone who'll watch over me. Watch over me. I know that someone's lost in the world. I know I could always be good. To one who'll watch over me. Watch over me. Although he may not be a handsome. Girls think of as handsome. To my heart. He carries the key. To my heart. He carries the key. Won't you tell him please to put on some speed? Oh, my dear. How I need. Someone to watch over me. Someone to watch over me. All over the place for a good portion of this year. Most of them are seniors. And their final concert is next Thursday evening. Maryville High School, Red Heart Auditorium at 7:30 PM. We hope you all come out because not only do we have two other groups that are just as fabulous. And there's a whole lot more dancing and a lot more music that is made in the USA. That's our theme. And these two pieces were fun because they're made in Boylan. So nice job, guys. Thank you. The lights are lit so tall. To the hills of Tennessee. Across the plains of Texas. Sea to shining sea. We're going down to Houston. And New York to LA. Well, there's pride in every American heart. And it's time to stand and say. And I'm proud to be an American. Where it's like oh, I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died. Will give them right to me. And I'm glad they stand up. They still are defenders still today. Cause there ain't no doubt that love is love. God bless the USA. God bless the USA. Don't be looking at it. For beautiful four spacious stars. For amber waves of gray. For golden mountains of magic sea. All of the fruit and grace. America, oh, America. God shed his grace on thee. And now my heart will go on the road. From sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful four heroes. Is there a rating shine? God himself, that he loves. And mercy for their life. America, America. God shed, shed his grace on thee. And from thy good brotherhood. Come see. Sea to shining sea. Okay, don't forget Thursday night, 7:30. Red Heart Auditorium, Maryville High School, the vocal team. My dog is cool.
As we wait for, wait for them to leave, clear the room. We have a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, we would like to recognize Mr. Nick Brown. Superintendent of Maryville School Corporation. This is Linda Janaitis, Maryville School Board. Mr. Danny Lackey, the Director of Diversity for Maryville. Nicole Perez. She's the person that facilitated this for us this year. She's new to the district, but thank you, Nicole, for all you've done. Also, we would like to recognize Ms. Kent. She's my favorite teacher. Last but not least, the person that last year when I went to her and said, we would like to do this again. And she took her spring break to work on this. Mrs. Kara Bonham, Principal at MIS. If I missed anybody else from the school corporation, charge it to my head, not my heart. But if there's anybody else here, could you please stand? Okay, I think that that's all the housekeeping items that we have. And at this time, we're going to, are you ready to gapple? It is now 6:49. Hit the gapple.
Hey, go. Good evening.
We got to speak loud.
Good evening. I would like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting to order. It is now 6:49. Would you please stand? For the invocations, I remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Amira Miller. Dear Lord, we thank you for all of your blessings. We thank you for the town council members in the city of Maryville. Please bless this team, this meeting, and the town of Maryville. Help them to do what is best for Maryville and use them to make a positive impact on our school and our town. Amen.
Amen.
Just to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God. Invisible liberty and justice for all. Mr. Ger- Mr. Gerenzy, roll call, please. Here.
Use that. Here. Here.
Here.
Hit it.
Oh, here. Here. Here.
Follow this one too. Six brothers, we have four. Before we get to the second part of this, there are a couple of things that we need to do. Let's do a large gathering permit, Mr. Shawn, the evidence. Just give us a title. We'll large gather and permit for who?
Northwest Indiana Hindu Religious Association.
Northwest Indiana Hindu Religious Association.
They're having a educational.
That's good.
Gab.
Motion.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilwoman Barrett. I gather we really need discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we would like to do the consent agenda for, uh, tonight.
Go ahead and make a motion. Approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barrett.
Motion.
All in favor of this question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now at this time, now you can.
Madam Crockett, a roll call. Thank you. Samantha Simpson?
Here.
Madison Gilbert?
Here.
Shelby Smith?
Here.
Lashawn Anderson?
Here.
Elise Tipman?
Here.
Danielle Tanzymore?
Here.
Hope Garrett?
Here.
Cameron Fields?
Here.
Jamila Morgan?
Here.
Montana Bishop?
Here.
Rihanna Early?
Here.
Naveah Hayes?
Here.
Kennedy Bishop?
Here.
Diamond Lewis?
Here.
Miranda Henderson? And Janiah Fettis?
Here.
These were all the names.
At this time, we're going to ask, uh, our president to read the winning essay for this year.
Here's my essay. If I was to get elected to the town council, I would focus more on the schools of Maryville. The town council, the town of Maryville is already great, but in a way to make it better is having a downtown and a community garden. One change I would make if elected is to be more involved with big decisions. I would want to create a club called the Community Council for Kids where we could talk about community events and issues. First, I feel we, we as a community have a job to focus more on the schools. We have been putting kids to the side. If we really focused on the schools, they'd be great. Kids, we want better books that not fall apart. The schools could really use a makeover, maybe even just a coat paint. Another thing that kids would love is just be more involved in the decisions that you, the council, and the school board make for us. Kids have a voice. If you give us a chance to use it, we can make big changes. Next, if kids had a Community Council for Kids, it would give us a chance to speak on the issues and together as a group instead of just school problems. We can come together and fix problems in a group of, as a group of kids and really, they're really devoted to making a change in the community and make it a better place. Another topic I would speak on is that we don't have a downtown, but most towns do. If we had downtown, it would attract people because it would also be full of history, but also a shopping center. Finally, if I was, if I was to get elected to the Maryville Town Council, I would do things that would benefit the community as a whole. I would have more kids involved with painting in the school, cleaning up the community, having more clubs that can really bring the community together. And that is my goal.
Committee reports.
We did that. Oh, we did.
Committee reports. Budget and finance. No report at this time. Public Works, Smith. Public, public, public works.
The townwide spring cleanup program for the branch and leaf pickup has been extended by the original schedule by two weeks till this Friday. The delay in competition is due to the very large amount of branches that were placed for pickup and many rain-related issues. The town wishes to thank its residents for their patience during this time.
Mr. Fields?
The town's annual neighborhood paving project began last month and will last till the end of September. Various roads throughout the town are being paved according to our pazer rating system. To assist the contractor, please, please adhere to the temporary no parking signs so that the construction will not be interrupted. Please feel free to call the town manager's office for any questions.
Anything else under public works? Thank you.
Oh, right there. Oh, flower dress.
Council affairs. Hope Garrett?
The town currently has two bids advertised for its two community crossing grants. The first bid for 73rd Avenue and County Line Road is due Tuesday, May 21st. The second bid for Whitcomb Street is due Tuesday, June 11th. All bids, all bids will be publicly opened and read out loud at 10 AM on the respective day. Bids will be taken under advisement for future town council approval.
Anything else under council affairs? No report. Personal policy and employee benefits.
There will be an executive session of the personal committee Tuesday, May 28th at 5 PM to discuss the procedures of selecting a new town manager. The town received 60 resumes and ha- and six have been provided initially to the town council for their review. Town engineer resumes are due by Friday, March 31st. Please feel free to contact Shawn Pettit, committee chairman, with any questions.
Public safety.
The police department had Officer Terrence Bronski graduate from the academy on Friday, April 26th. Officer Bronski started his FTO training on Monday, April 29th. With the weather warming up and the summer approaching, officers- With the weather warming up and the summer approaching, officers will be patrolling the schools, parks, and bikes paths on ATVs and bikes.
Okay, Earling.
Maryville Fire Territory has accepted three new applicants recently, two of which will be starting the Fire Academy soon, and one that already has his certifications. This brings our total manpower to fourteen full-time firefighters and twenty-eight paid-on-call firefighters. The fire department responded to a total of two thousand seven hundred seven calls in twenty-eighteen. That is an increase of three, three hundred forty-nine from the year prior. In two thousand nineteen, that response is already seventy more than this time one year ago. The Maryville firefighters will be conducting a fill-a-boot this coming weekend, May seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, from ten a.m. until three p.m. at the corners of U.S. Thirty and Broadway to help raise money for the Hoosier Burn Camp, an organization that sponsors children that have been severely burned to enjoy summer camp. The camp is fully funded by donations. Each child costs roughly one thousand dollars per summer, and in twenty-eighteen, Maryville Fire raised over fourteen thousand dollars.
Parks and, Parks and Recreation. Naveah Hayes?
I have great news. I have been seeking our sponsorship for our summer concert. I contacted CDR Bank and submitted a request for sponsorship of the concert to pay for talent, stage, lights, and sound. CDR Bank contacted me last week and gave us good news that they will be sponsoring the concert. I will be working with them on advertising signage, media marketing, and logistics. The only cost to the park department will be for the rental of ports, of impulse, and rental of golf carts. The talent has already signed their agreements, and the lineup will be solar players together and Latin, Latin Satan Soul. Due to the huge turnout last year, we have contacted Christian Revival and Saint Peter and Paul Churches to utilize their parking lots for the concert on Friday night. The park department draft master plan is close to being ready to submit the DNR for review, and the impact we study is more than halfway complete.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs?
Elise Tippman?
The Lake County Solid Waste Management Office will have a household hazardous waste collection on Saturday, June first, from nine a.m. to two p.m. at Hoover Public Works Department, three hundred forty South Shelby Street. Kennedy Bishop, report for stormwater.
Tiny ditch between Seventy-third Avenue and U.S. Thirty.
Tiny ditch between Seventy-third Avenue and U.S. Thirty is being cleared by construction and will be completed within the next two weeks. We have requested quotes for a drainage project at Eighty-third Avenue, Indiana Street. The Tri-Tree Box Clever Project will be put out for bid next month. LJ applications at Barn, Ear Lake have begun and will be continued through October. Robust Engineering is serving several areas to study draining operations at FDC in Vermont Street and Seventy and Michelle Street.
Elections and public relations. LaShawna Anderson?
The Park Department is in the planning process for the Independence Day Parade to take place on July fourth at twelve p.m. The parade will begin at eighty FPL, Justin Funeral Home, and travel north on Broadway to Sixty-seventh Avenue. The town flow has been ordered, and the Park Department is working on the donation letters to area businesses. We will be contacting the Shriners, Lake County Pipes and Drums, and a couple other entertaining features for the parade. A new feature this year is we are looking for Maryville youth to enter the parade with a decorated bicycle. The judges will pick the best decorated bike, bike from the entries. Check our Facebook page for, for details.
Miranda Henderson?
The Department of Planning has a wealth of tools and information already available online. You may ex, you may access the zoning map and the municipal code. Our goal is to provide the town residents and stakeholders with timely and concise information on projects, on projects and planning, innovative initiatives in the town of Maryville.
Diamond Lewis?
Permit information. Permits are required for the following: construction, demolition, addition, or repair of any structure, including remodeling or change of use. This includes, but not is, but is not limited to additions, garage, sheds, swimming pools, and pools.
Thank you. Um, Utility Liaison, Samantha Sampson?
The town wants to inform its residents that the Townstead Tree Service is currently doing work for NIPSCO within our community. Townstead is trimming branches away from the electrical lines. Please be aware that Townstead is responsible for, uh, for removal of all the tree branches and not the town of Maryville. Please feel free to contact NIPSCO with any questions or concerns you may have dealing with their yearly tree program.
Abandoned Properties, Janiah Fettis?
The town, ta, the town owns six narrow lots between Fifty-sixth and Fifty-seventh on Broadway. These have been combined and, and this property is now going to put up for sale, going to be put up for sale. Hopefully, a new business will be interested in building there. The town also owns two lots and, on the corner of Fifty-sixth and Broadway. These lots also have been combined and plan, plan is to clear them as they are, are unbuildable and plant white clovers, clover there as a test to see if this is a way to maintain vacant lots. Please let us know if you become aware of any house reservations being done in your works. We will work with planning and building to make sure that the needed per, permits are in place.
Ms. Morgan?
Councilmembers, please be aware that I have two tax sale certificates in the name of town as related to the carriage house properties. The town wants to thank Commissioners Al, Kyle, Allen, Gina, Shay, Shay, Authorities Matt Fetch, and, and the tax sale departments for all of their help. We will take further action on these properties.
This concludes community reports. General orders? No force reading ordinances? No second reading ordinances? No resolutions? Is there any VZA? Any old business? Any new business? Okay. At this time, I would like to open up for the public comments. If there is any public comments, I would, I would ask that you state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. At this time, I would like to open it up for public.
You have a public comment?
Ma'am, you want to speak? That's very, turn the mic around to her so she can speak.
Third one there.
Oh, is there one here? Okay. My name is Karen Black. I live right off the dry pond in the Meadowdale subdivision at fifty-three ten Tyler Street. That is supposed to be a dry pond in that area. Every time, for the past, for the first fifteen years, it did its job, we had no problems. Hurricane Ike came in, my house was a disaster. I had to get it practically built from the floor up. We had one rain in the last two weeks, one day of rain. And I have pictures that show you that I had four feet of water in my backyard. Now, all of a sudden, there's a sign back there that says wetland. It is not a wetland, it was a dry pond. The drainage that's on the end of it is clogged because nobody goes in and mows it, nobody keeps it up. I have a ten thousand dollar, um, outbuilding in the back that I used for extra work that was also flooded. Flooding almost came up to the top of my deck, the next place would have been right in my house. Nobody takes care of this dry pond, nobody mows it anymore, nobody cleans it anymore. No wild animals would go there because it's toxic. Anything that's put on the grass, anything that's there to prevent weeds is all draining in there. It took three days for the water to go down, now we've got green slime back there, which is perfect for, for mosquitoes, for anything back there. I like to be out in my backyard, and I'm afraid of what might be out there. Every time it floods, I come in with new weeds in my backyard that never were there before, coming from the dry pond. Nobody's taking care of this. The dry pond's supposed to run into a ditch that runs through Maryville. It's supposed to be taken care of every year. A detention pond, from everything that I've read, is supposed to be taken care of on an annual basis. Nobody takes care of it. They mow around it, they mow on my easement when it's not mowed.
Excuse me, ma'am, your three minutes are up.
I have pictures for you?
Your three minutes are up. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Announcements, environmental resources? Committee? Will meet May sixteen, two thousand nineteen, at two o'clock, two p.m. Blind Commission Meeting, May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty p.m. Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting, May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty p.m. Abandoned Blighted Properties Committee Meeting, May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at two thirty p.m. Redevelopment Committee will meet May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at six p.m. In Town Council Meeting, May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty p.m. One more bit of business?
Motion, Twitter?
Second.
Thank you.